Well, I usually ask, and I took the order this, all the way down this house.
Do you want to check and see if they're ready over there? Ready to go?
We're ready?
Yeah, I mean, it's seven, right? That's what I got. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order of this meeting of the twentieth of October, twenty twenty-two, City of Nashua Planning Board. Could we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Donjes, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper here. Patricia Lee.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Mark Meehan. Derek Thibodeau.
Okay, so we have a call. We're gonna go ahead and move forward with our agenda. First off, for the board, within your packet, there was a set of minutes from the October sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need any amendments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October sixth, twenty twenty-two Planning Board meeting as written.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve the October sixth minutes as written. We'll give a second, second by Alderman Klee. Do we have any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that's unanimous, that passes. Next up, Communications?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Board. The following two items were received after your packet was mailed. Case eight twenty-two oh one seven seven one seven eight and oh one seven nine, McLean Middleton letter, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, for the Nashua Landing Project. Case eight twenty-two dash zero two oh two, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, this is a engineering letter from City of Nashua, Mark Saunders, concerning that case, Nine Towns and West. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any reports for committees or liaisons?
None.
Okay, the only thing I'd pass along is that we did kick off the Capital Improvements Committee again for the year this week, and that process will be moving over the next couple of months within the committee itself. Okay, next up, I'm gonna go ahead and receive, review the procedure of the meeting and hearings. So the procedure of the meetings and hearings are as follows. After each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, a public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and a description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll next ask for testimony from the audience. First, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan to come and speak. If you desire, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This will be your time to express concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. The same thing will happen on Zoom as well, we'll open that up. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant, and then the applicant will be given a rebuttal period, at which time they can speak to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this is concluded, the public hearing will end, the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. We ask that both sides and everyone keep their remarks to the subject at hand, not repeat anything that's been said already. The board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, and considering all the applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I thank everybody at this time for their interest and their attention, and ask if you do have a cell phone here, go ahead and make sure you put it on mute, and if you're on Zoom, that you stay muted until I open up the public portions of the each application. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on with the agenda. Old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, case eight twenty-one dash zero two nine nine, my case has been tabled to November third in a previous meeting. That's the same for the same owner and applicant in case numbers eight twenty-one dash zero three hundred, and eight twenty-one zero three oh one, and eight twenty-one dash zero three oh two. Old business site plan eight twenty-two dash zero one eight two, that's the Merritt Place LLC owner application, has also been tabled to November third in a previous meeting, as is eight twenty-two dash zero zero three nine, same owner and applicant, again tabled to November third. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. And then I'm gonna move directly now to new business site plan, this is case number eight twenty-two dash zero two zero two. This is the Teledyne Flur Commercial Systems, Inc., owner, Academy for Science and Design Charter School applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR twelve eighty-seven to allow change of use, to allow a nonprofit school. This property is located at Nine Towns and West. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application, eight twenty-two dash zero two zero two, and make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before any action is taken, I would like to recuse myself from case eight twenty-two dash zero two zero two.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So following up, again, anybody have a chance to review this application on the board? Want to make a motion towards jurisdiction? Mr. Hirsch?
I move to take jurisdiction of eight twenty-two dash zero two zero two.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Hirsch to take jurisdiction, eight twenty-two dash zero two zero two. We have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor of the jurisdiction?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so we have jurisdiction, we have someone from the applicant? Go ahead.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak, I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, Three Congress Street here in Nashua, here tonight representing the Academy of Science and Design, ASD. With me here tonight is Attorney Bill Tucker, the project attorney, Heidi Monticup from Greenman Peterson, who's a projects traffic engineer, as well as several members of the ASD staff. We're here tonight seeking a change of use, site plan approval upon the property located at Nine Towns and West here in Nashua. I have a very quick presentation, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
Location of the property, as I mentioned, Nine Towns and West, located off of Amherst Street in northwest Nashua. The lot measures approximately eleven acres, is located in the PI Park Industrial Zone along with the mixed-use overlay district. As you can see from the aerial photo up on the screen, commercial properties abut the site on three sides. We've got railroad tracks and the Nashua Airport then abutting the site to the south. The history of the site is that it was developed in the mid nineteen eighties as a commercial flex building. In two thousand and eleven, a company called Fleer Commercial Systems purchased the property and occupied the entire building. It is our understanding that Fleer is now moving out of this site to a larger location out of town. With regards to the property, the property currently contains a one-story building measuring approximately a hundred and nine, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand square feet in size, four hundred and eighty parking spaces, with access to the site being provided via the cul-de-sac off of Towns and West. There are eight loading docks located behind the building, and the site currently has a full complement of utilities to service the use. A little bit about the Academy of Science Design, they're currently located just up the street, four eighty-six Amherst Street, where they rent space right now. The reason for the move is to meet the growing needs of the school, and of course, this building with Fleer vacating the site is, is open. They are charter, a public charter school with approximately five hundred and sixty students and forty-seven staff. Typical hours of operation, seven forty-five AM to four thirty PM. With regards to the proposed development, it's being proposed to change the use of this building from commercial to educational. As you know, the mixed-use overlay provides the Planning Board with the authority to vary the use and dimensional standards of a property. That section, one ninety twenty-three, does allow for educational uses in the PI zone as long as it complies with the site suitability standards outlined in the code. Our application was submitted to include this site suitability report that was prepared by the development team. We're certainly happy to go into the details of that report if needed by the board. Our client believes that this use does comply with those conditions as set forth in the regulations. It's worth noting that there are no building or site improvements needed for this project. It's really an interior conversion of the existing space to make it ready for an educational use. There is one exterior set of stairs in the back of the building that the fire department has asked the school to move about ten feet to slightly better the rear access around the back of the site. With regards to traffic, the Greenman Peterson team prepared a traffic letter for the project comparing the school traffic to that of the existing commercial use. Fleer at capacity had approximately four hundred employees and ten truck trips per day. ASD will have the typical AM arrival times and PM departure times, typical of students and staff. They average about six buses per day, along with a total of six truck trips per year. The traffic study found that two different, that the two different uses actually produce similar results, traffic-wise. There is a very slightly increase in the AM and PM trips for this use, as well as the total trips per day, however, we were well below the thresholds for further study. And as such, Greenman Peterson concluded that the change of use would not adversely impact traffic on the adjacent roadway network. The traffic department did request additional info and a voluntary contribution to the Amherst Street Corridor Fund totaling fourteen thousand dollars, to which my client has agreed to. Mr. Chair, we did request two waivers related to the site plan in our letter dated September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The first is related to section one ninety-two seventy-nine EE, which is the survey of adjacent parcels. We did provide a survey plan for this entire parcel. The second waiver is related to parking, section one ninety, one ninety-eight. We are providing four hundred and eighty parking spots, all the spots that exist out there today, when only ninety spaces are required by code, the maximum being two spaces per classroom. So the reasons to support this waiver, the request to survey all properties within a thousand feet is excessive, given that the regulation would require a significant amount of additional survey off-site for such a small project. With regards to the parking, as I mentioned, the maximum required parking spaces for this use being forty-five classrooms is ninety spaces. The site holds four hundred and eighty spaces that are out there now. There is no proposed plan to remove any of the spaces, because the school will have an occasional need during the year for this amount of parking. Their graduation event, and other events and academic competitions, where ASD feels that that parking lot would be close to, if not at full capacity, again, those are just a couple of times a year. It's our opinion that granting these waivers will not harm any public or private rights. So in summary, Mr. Chair, we believe that our application conforms to the intent and requirements of the Land Use Code, in particular, those outlined in section one ninety twenty-three with the mixed-use overlay. The conditions of approval, as outlined in the staff report, are acceptable. I would suggest respectfully the possibility of an added condition if that wasn't added already, given the engineering letter that was issued. We have no problem with the comments or the traffic contribution as outlined in that letter, and we respectfully seek your approval here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will go ahead and open it up to the board. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Barley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I wanna confirm my understanding, the, there are essentially no site plan changes, as I understand, the basis for the application is really the change of use, is that a fair assessment?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant by the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Not seeing any. I'll go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody here in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the, or concerned, or having concern with the plan? Go ahead and come up to the microphone. Okay, not seeing anybody. Anybody on Zoom? See anybody?
Nobody, they're hand raised.
Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Again, in the audience or on Zoom? Okay, I am seeing none. I will give the board one last chance while we have the hearing open, to ask any questions of staff or the applicant. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing and move on to the meeting. So we've got a, essentially just a change of use with no real major site issues. Seems like a good use of a building to me. Alderman Klee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you, I think it is a good use of the building. There is adequate parking. I would think there would be actually less traffic coming in and out of that, that area. I know those that use that corridor have concerns about additional traffic, I think this would actually be less. You know, first thing in the morning with the buses, and then in the afternoon with the buses, that would be about it, but I, I see that all things have been met. The fourteen thousand dollars towards the traffic corridor contribution seems appropriate. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I would just add a couple of points. I mean, I think in the applicant notes this, I think this is actually an improvement for traffic, first back in terms of the relative to the current location, which is maybe a challenging intersection, so I think that's, you know, that's improvement in terms of the sort of, you know, the location, the effectiveness of the location, the criteria that are being considered a change of use, given the short distance between where the school's located now and its proposal, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that there would be no reason to, you know, to change judgment about whether this is, you know, meets, meets that criteria in terms of consistency with the, with the district, so I agree with both of you, it's a good use.
Mr. Peterson?
Further comment on the traffic improvement? In the current location, in the afternoon, you'll see parents waiting to pick up their student backed out all the way into Route one oh one A, and that situation will go away with this new location.
Great. Any other comments? Anybody wanna make a motion? Reminder on the motion, there, the applicant did indicate, and we did get in our packet a letter from the city with some comments, I think that letter's dated October nineteenth, and we did not have any issues with that, so. Mr. Barley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. So I would like to make a motion to approve new business eight twenty-two dash zero two zero two site plan, Teledyne Flur Commercial Systems, Inc., owner, Academy for Science and Design applicant, and that motion to approve would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NR section one ninety dash one forty-six D and section one ninety dash twenty-three F. And there will be a total of four stipulations. The first two of those are waiver requests, number one being a request for a waiver from section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE regarding the existing conditions, that read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two being a request for a waiver from section one ninety dash one ninety-eight regarding maximum number of parking spaces to exceed, to permit the, the plan to exceed the maximum number, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, to read as written in the staff report. And then a new stipulation, number four, that will read prior to the chair signing the plan, all conditions in the letter dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two from Mark Saunders, to be satisfied to, or I'm sorry, to be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve, eight twenty-two dash zero two zero two, with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. All right. All right, so next up on the agenda, essentially, we have three cases, and we've said, I'm just gonna kind of read the cases on the agenda, and then I'm gonna, the way this process is gonna work, I'm gonna have some comments by the planning group here to kind of give us an update of what's happened in between the sort of last application and this application, and then we'll kind of move forward from there. So the first up is new business subdivision plan, eight twenty-two dash zero one seven seven. This is the Landing at Nashua LLC, care of the in, in, owner. Application and acceptance of proposal to subdivide a forty-one point three one acre lot, the product and merger of three existing lots. This property is at two East Spitbrook Road. And I'm, I'm gonna sort of combine all these, and we'll sort of try to take jurisdiction together.
Take them off the table.
Yeah, or, or take them off the table first, I guess. Well, no, these are new applicants, right? Yeah, so these are new, so. And then new business, so the second one is new business site plan, eight twenty-two dash zero one seven eight, same owner. This is an application and acceptance of proposal to construct a self-storage facility. Again, this property is at, located at two East Spitbrook Road. And the third item that's related is new business site plan, eight twenty-two dash zero one seven nine, again, same owner. This is an application and acceptance of proposal to construct a Costco retail store with fuel station, again, located at two East Spitbrook Road. So I think first up, procedurally, should we, should we, and I'm, this is a question for planning, should I go through the jurisdiction first?
You've already accepted jurisdiction of these applications.
Okay, so these are all accepted jur, at this point?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we read them in at least at this point, so I will go ahead and, if, if planning could please give me just an update of sort of, from the previous applications to this one, what the gist of why we're here?
Sure, yeah, so just a brief update.
Make sure you just grab that mic and put it close, just so everybody.
So originally, the, the application was first heard back in April of twenty-one. It was tabled several times until September twenty-one, where the board conditionally approved the three applications. Per court order, the proceedings and approvals were stayed in October of twenty-one. On July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the court reversed the three approvals, but then clarified with a follow-up order on August sixteenth, stating that that was a remand and not a reversal. In light of that, or the, the primary reasons for the remand was a question about a, a waiver, and whether it is the correct waiver, or if a waiver was indeed needed. And the second was in regards to a, a late submission of some traffic information, and there was concerns over having enough time to review and process that information. So in light of those, staff has composed a memo, which is in your packet. There are a couple of elements here, I just want to detail, as these are important to, to our proceedings tonight. One, primarily relevant to a schedule, and this is that second point of the, of the remand, we are proposing that any new materials be submitted to the Planning Board from the applicant fourteen days prior to a, a Planning Board meeting at which a hearing is to be scheduled, and any submissions in response, or not in response to those materials, from the public, including the appellant, be received by the Planning Division no later than seven days prior to that public meeting. A couple of items in the staff recommendation section of this memo, some of these are relevant to the process for tonight, but I do specifically want to call out number five, relevant to a revised traffic study. Staff has taken the opportunity to review some traffic documents from the Costco application as well as other applications along the corridor, namely, the BJ's Gas Station. And upon review of these documents and further conversations with the city's engineering division, staff feels that a revised traffic study may no longer be necessary, however, we're certainly open to having a conversation about that with the board, the applicant, and the appellant this evening.
Okay, all right, thanks. So I think the first step in this for us is, is a, is a vote to reopen. So I think the reopening motion should be clear to, you know, some of these items listed by the recommendations, and, and clear to what we want to hear. And the reason being, I, I think, and I want to let everybody know who's listening or who's in here, obviously, the board has heard all of the, all of this application, so, you know, over the last year or so, so we're not really looking at this as if we've not seen it before. We understand that, and we don't need a regurgitation, if you will, of all of the, how the application is, is, what, what's being proposed. We understand that, but we do have to respond formally and work through these remand conditions. So I'll start with, does somebody want to make a motion? Mr. Barley, go ahead and, yeah, be specific on the.
Yeah, I, I would make a motion with, with the understanding that this, this motion to reopen will probably require some discussions among the board members. But the, the motion I would like to make is that we reopen the public hearing this evening, in the first instance, to allow the opportunity to hear from the applicant abutters strictly as to process. And we heard from staff, a proposal regarding, you know, submissions, for example, and additionally to talk a little bit about the next steps, including the, the issue around, you know, a revised traffic report or not. And then, only if the board were to conclude that we were ready to proceed to hear any substantive element of the application, would we then hear from the applicant and abutters as to those substantive points. And then finally, Chair, as you suggested, I think that both as to process and ultimately substance, if we were to get to that point, we should focus on the particular issues that Mr. Durfee had identified in terms of those that were the subject of the remand, given your point that we have heard quite extensively, you know, the merits of, of the application otherwise at, at previous hearings. So I apologize for the, the length and detail of that motion, but that is my motion.
So, does anybody want to second that motion? We'll start there.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Okay, discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and, and my apologies if there's any ignorance on, on my part regarding this. I, I just want to make sure I understand, we're, are we just discussing the issues with regard to, to the remand issue? Again, I guess what, what I'm trying to understand, are, are we gonna have four, five, six months
Again, I guess what I'm trying to understand, are we going to have four, five, six months of successive testimony and point, counterpoint from all different sides? That may be derivative of this process anyway, but I guess I'm trying not to have, or trying to understand if we're going to have a complete re-presentation of all materials with additional submittals, upon submittal, upon re-submittal, upon submittal. I guess I'm not quite sure what we're undertaking at this point, so I would appreciate some clarification on the process. And I might be the only one that didn't really understand the process, but I'm a tad bit confused at the moment.
That's okay.
To what exactly is under our jurisdiction?
Yeah. So, you want to clarify your motion on those questions?
Sure. So, you know, to your point, and I apologize, this may not have been particularly clear, but I think sort of the last component of the motion was intended to sort of get at that point. And, you know, I didn't want to jump ahead of where I think, you know, the board may or may not end up in terms of, you know, the process, but I guess the way I could potentially envision this, given what has been recommended by planning staff, is that we would use the opportunity this evening first to sort of discuss process. But to your point, it seems to me that we'd be with an understanding that we are, we are setting a date, and I know that, you know, staff has recommended, you know, for example, you know, pushing the, you know, sort of the merits consideration on the remand points, the 17th, but that would be with the understanding that if we get agreement understanding from all parties this evening, as this is what the process is, this is the timeframe you have to submit, we are then effectively communicating to them that this is what you need to expect for the 17th, that we would intend to review the merits at that time of the remand issues and act.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Barley, that had nothing to do with your original motion. It had to do with my lack of understanding, but that clarification helped, so thank you.
Good. Any other discussion by the board? Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. I tried reading as much as possible as I can on all of this stuff, but the one comment that I want to make to, I think what Mr. Durfee, as well as you said, we're not going to start this from scratch. We're just going to continue, look at the remands and so on. And today, we're just going to, as you just stated to my colleague here, is basically just kind of come to conclusions, set the dates and so on, for November 17th to kind of kick off the continuation of what, everything that's been happening. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
Go ahead, that's your motion.
Yeah, no, I think, so, again, I don't want to get ahead of this, you know, the motion that I made to this point is just as to opening the hearing, but that, you know, I'm expressing sort of my individual view, so I don't want to suggest that, you know, that that's not an issue that we'll need, that the board will need to discuss, and that others may have different views on. But that's what I'm envisioning, and so that's why, you know, in my motion, I started with, I think the first component here is to discuss that process element, and then assuming that we get to that point, then I think that would be the next step.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion by the board? Okay. All those in favor of Mr. Barley's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, that motion passes. So we have the hearing open at this time. I guess the first step to, and I'll go to staff here, was I start, I think the first probably discussion point with the applicant at this point would be to on any further discussion or comments you want to make regarding these remand items, the waiver, your thoughts on the traffic study revision or update needed, and then the proposed schedule that's been put out there of, you know, submitting anything new 14 days prior to a hearing, and I guess that's really, and any response seven days prior.
But just to be clear, focusing on process to start in, you know, as opposed to the merits, so we can go in that order.
Yes, understood. I believe this is on, correct?
It is, we can hear you.
Sometimes I'm so loud that I can't tell when there's a mic or when it's just me. John Weaver, I'm here for the applicant, the Landing at Nashua and Costco Warehouse Wholesale Corporation, excuse me.
Just give your, either corporate address or whatever.
Oh, excuse me, I'm from McLean Middleton, 900 Elm Street, Manchester.
Oh, great, great, thanks.
So with regard to the proposed deadlines for submissions, we have no objections to that 14 days prior to any hearings makes sense to us, particularly in light of the court's order, so we have no objection to the proposal from the planning staff. With regard to the proposed schedule in terms of substantive consideration of the court's issues, again, no objection to continue that to November 17th, giving board members, as well as members of the public, as well as ourselves, the opportunity to more, spend more time considering the traffic study from last year, as well as comments, questions that they have at this time. With regard to potential submissions that we would have, I do anticipate there being a further submission between now and the 17th, with the understanding that that would need to be submitted to the city, as well as BJ's at the request of BJ's counsel, submission addressing more of the substance than we did in our submission dated from September of this year. Getting into more of the details of the issue that the court identified, as well as the court's language, that if there are other issues that need to be raised, where we would proactively address some that we would want to raise with the planning board at this time in order to address things that might be raised on appeal after ultimate decision here.
Okay. So you are envisioning some, what you call proactive additional information before the 17th?
Yes. Yeah, so for example, I would want to put in one submission, all of the, an explanation for all of the satisfaction of all the criteria under the subdivision regulations and the site plan requirements, so that the board, as well as any review in court, has it easily in one location, and is clearly stated, and that the board in its ultimate decision could rely on, here's our finding, here's our finding, here's our finding.
Okay. Mr. Barley?
Yeah, just, you know, given the issue that was raised by staff, and then we covered the summary of the motion, do you have a view at this point as to whether you, whether those comments or any additional submissions would include a new or modified traffic report, or are you, given staff's position, that revised position, are you not intending to submit?
My clients agree with the staff's position that the issue the court identified in its order was not the substance of the traffic report, the substance of anything, really. It was the process that the board used, and so it's appropriate that we're starting with procedural discussion, because the issues the court identified was process, and that it wasn't that the substance of the traffic report from September of last year had any fault in it, but rather that the board and members of the public needed more time to consider it, comment on it, question it, before an ultimate decision could be made. There's no reason at this time to update that traffic study, the substance has not been called into question.
Thank you.
Questions of the applicant from the board? Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there anything within the staff recommendation that you disagree with or have questions about, or do you basically agree with the template that has been set forth to go forward?
Off the top of my head, no. I think that the court's consideration and concern about having, giving time to the board and all members of the public, in light of that, in light of that concern of the court's order, providing a two-week window in which applicant, the applicant submissions need to be submitted before hearing, I think that makes a great deal of sense. Similarly, giving, requiring butters or other interested members of the public, requiring them that they submit seven days in advance of the applicant, and board members have a chance to review that and be able to comment on that knowledgeably at each hearing, it makes a great deal of sense. As I just mentioned, the staff's recommendation that no traffic study, no updated traffic study is required at this time, that's consistent with our view of the court order, and I believe those are the two major points from the staff memo and the staff's recommendations, unless there is something else that you want to.
No, I didn't have a specific point, I was just kind of speaking towards generally, because we're, that's what we're trying to decide tonight. So I didn't want something to come up on November 17th. Well, we didn't really agree with comment number three of staff recommendation, I think now would be the time to air it. And I'm not saying you did have an issue, just if you were, it would be nice to hear that this evening, as opposed to six weeks, or, you know, a month down the road.
I have it here, I don't believe so, but since you posed a question, let me just double check my outline here. No, no.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone else from the board have any questions of the applicant at this time? Okay. All right. So, thank you. Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and ask, is there anybody in the public wishing to speak of opposition or concern, or comment? Come on up, and again, we're, I think you've probably heard what we're trying to limit the discussion tonight to, and welcome comment or questions regarding that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Leclair, and fellow members of the planning board. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. So I, my name is Kelly Jordan Price, I'm from the law firm of Pinkley Allen &amp; Snyder, which is located at 650 Elm Street in Manchester, and I'm representing the butter BJ's Wholesale. And at one point of clarification, when the planning staff was making its report, I believe he said that the decisions were not reversed, they were just remanded, they were actually reversed and remanded, I just wanted to make that clarifying point. With respect to process here, one of our big concerns has always been that we have not had sufficient time to respond, and that was, the court in fact found that in our favor, and specifically put in its order that we have to be afforded a reasonable time to respond. I have to say that until a few minutes ago, it was my understanding that Costco was doing a revised traffic study. I had heard that as early as 7 o'clock tonight, so I was a little surprised to find out that they're no longer doing that, which obviously is their prerogative. My concern, if we're going to be limited to seven, a seven-day turnaround period for submitting written submissions to the, to the board, I want to make sure that the scope of what's going to be submitted is pretty limited, because seven days is not a whole lot of time. So I had put in a letter that I had submitted to the planning staff that I suggested five days in advance of the hearing, so Costco would make its submissions 14 days, BJ's could make its submission five days in advance of the hearing, which I think is reasonable for run-of-the-mill submissions. If there's going to be any type of substantive or extensive traffic analysis, we really need a couple of weeks to be able to respond to that, and a seven-day turnaround, or even a nine-day turnaround time is just simply not reasonable. So my concern is that there are going to be submissions, and we're not going to be afforded the reasonable period of time that the court has stated in its order that we're entitled to have. So that's my concern with that. I think that schedule is very tight.
Mr. Barley?
I mean, I appreciate your concern to the extent that we were talking about, you know, extensive substance submissions. I mean, I think what we heard from the applicant is, A, they're not intending, as you said, to perform an updated or just substantively modified the existing traffic report. You know, it seems to me, given the lengthy, extensive, voluminous record here that, you know, your client has been privy to for now an extensive period of time, it seems to me that under most circumstances, it would be reasonable to act within the seven-day turnaround, given the nature of the submission that the applicant, that they would make. With that said, you know, I think the board has the opportunity, if the applicant were to submit something that we were to view as more significant, more substantive in terms of traffic, or some other consideration, to, you know, to reconsider, you know, the action that the board would take. But it seems to me, at least as a default matter, that the seven days, you know, in my view, is reasonable, given where we are in the process.
And just a point of clarification, so if it's anything that's substantive, or new stuff on traffic, if there's some sort of, what I want to make sure, that if there's a submission, that if it is what could be construed as being a further traffic submission, that we be permitted to have more than a seven-day period of time to do a turnaround in comments.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm suggesting is, well, yes, I mean, if the applicant were to say, gee, we changed our mind, we are submitting a new traffic report, I think obviously that, that would, you know, impact potentially how the board would then, you know, respond to that. But I guess what I'm ultimately saying is that, you know, at least in my view, the board, you know, has the ability to reserve the right to, you know, reconsider where things stand at a future hearing, if we view the nature of the submissions as being more significant than we anticipated.
Yeah, I'd probably add too, that, you know, we're sort of under the same review period you are. So when we get the information, we've got to review it in that same timeframe, and I think if we don't feel comfortable, we can review it in the timeframe, it's probably going to be reasonably consistent with your inability to review as well. So we're probably not out of alignment there, is kind of what I'm saying, you know, because we're gonna, we're gonna need that time as well, if it's some, you know, substantive stuff. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you very much. Just so that I'm clear to what you were, what you were asking about, you were saying that, that we posted a seven-day submission for the public, the butters, et cetera, and you're asking for that to be changed to five days?
That's what I had asked, and I actually, there's another procedural snafu that has happened in this case. So we weren't, or I guess a couple of procedural snafus. Apparently Costco had made a submission to the planning board on September 8th. We were not aware of that until the close of business on the eve of the holiday weekend in October, so a full month after Costco had made that submission. I received an email from Mr. Sullivan, sending me a copy of the submission, and then, in a proposed procedure, and then advising that we had two business stays to lodge any objections to the procedure, and if we didn't do so, it would be deemed acquiescence. I did respond to the email by way of a letter, which I don't know if it's in your packets or not, hopefully it is. And in that letter, I proposed, I lodged my objections, and I also asked for certain clarification in terms of what was going to be happening here tonight, and I didn't receive that clarification. We did receive a planning board memo last week, so not knowing what to expect for tonight's hearing, and needing to reserve my client's rights with respect to this matter, I, by the 5:00 PM deadline yesterday, emailed to the planning board and to Mr. Sullivan, a letter including some initial comments from Vanessa &amp; Associates, our traffic consultants, with respect to that the September 8th, 2021 revised traffic impact study prepared by Fussin O'Neil. I emailed that yesterday around 4:00. I learned late this afternoon that apparently, the email, I confirmed receipt with one of the exterior recipients, and I know it went out, on my end, didn't get any, any indication to the contrary. I learned mid to late afternoon today that the planning board did not receive it, because there was some sort of server issue on the city's system. So that has been submitted, and I want to just make sure that my submission becomes part of the record. I was told that it's not part of the record for tonight's proceeding, but I want to make sure that it is part of the record, and will, and will be considered at the November 17th hearing. If my understanding is correct, that we're not going to address substantive issues tonight, and that's going to be addressed on the 17th.
Yeah, I mean, I can, you certainly can submit that.
Yes.
You have it.
We do.
Okay, so it has been received, so we will be reviewing it.
And then I guess two other procedural points, I just want to be assured, and I did speak with Attorney Weaver, and he's confirmed this is the case, and it's going to be reciprocal, that when Costco or the applicant make any type of submissions to the planning board in connection with this matter, that I get copied on them, and I, of course, will do the same. And so, and also to the extent, I don't know what the board's plans are with respect to the peer reviewer, to the extent there are further submissions that are made to the planning board, I want to make sure that I am aware of them and get copies of them promptly after they're submitted.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Yep. Okay.
And that. And that, I believe that covers the procedural issues that I wanted to address.
Okay. So, any questions on the board? Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I just want to make sure, because we can't do this for every meeting. If, if a letter was accidentally not copied to someone, we can't, that, you're potentially starting off on the wrong foot here for the rehearing. Please make sure both sides to copy each other on all correspondences, because they don't want to sit here on November 17th for an hour discussing who didn't get copied on what. It's, it's not fair. And if, despite the fairness to the parties involved, it puts the board at a disadvantage if we're not seeing communications as well. I had no idea you sent something. It's in the ether somewhere. Like, this is, this was part of the issue last time, the late materials. And I didn't get this. I didn't get this. I didn't have time to respond. I think we really need a firm understanding today of, that everybody understands the process. And I'm, just I, I'm, I, I just don't want to have to deal with that again. If everybody can at least make their submittals on time and keep all parties involved, that would be extraordinarily helpful procedurally.
Agreed. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just for clarification, you said that you did send that out by the deadline, but the city had a server issue, and that's why we did not get that in time.
That is absolutely correct.
I just want to make sure.
And I have, I have a copy of my emails showing that I sent it, if you want.
I mean, you can certainly submit a hard copy too, just to keep the record.
And we will, we will see it by the next meeting.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to make sure we clarified that. The other question is, and perhaps this is more to the chair. First, I have, I think, seven days for us to get it and be able to review it, as well as them to be able to have the date and so on. I respect the need for the five-day submission. So, my question is, if you did not get that, because that also puts a burden on, on the board too. If you, they kept the seven-day submission as it has been suggested, you will be able to still get the information in time? I, like Mr. Ballinger, I don't want to hear, seven days isn't enough, and we couldn't get it in time, and then we go back and forth. I just want to get that out on the table. I know it'd be easy for you to say, no, we can't do it. But...
Well, I suppose the struggle I have is, you know, we will do our best to respond within seven days. We're dealing with a bit of an unknown because I don't know what may be submitted by Costco or the applicant. So, you know, there could be a whole range of degrees of submittals. And I can tell you, we would work as expeditiously as we possibly could to meet that seven-day deadline. But I can't, I don't know what we'd be responding to. So, I can't say definitively that we wouldn't be seeking additional time, depending upon what may come in.
But at that point, you would actually then ask for additional time, saying that this was more substantial than you thought it would be. Is that correct?
Yes. If, if that's what the board imposes in terms of a schedule, and we're required to submit something seven days in advance of a hearing, or five days in advance of the hearing, whatever the decision ultimately is, then if we feel that we are unable to meet that deadline, then we would make a request for additional time and a continuance of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I would request it though, that the request be given due an appropriate consideration, given that this traffic, I don't know what's going to be coming our way in terms of traffic. And it could be some complex new type of study that we need sufficient time to respond to. And on that point, if there is a revised traffic impact study that is submitted, seven days is not reasonable. If there's an actual revised traffic impact study, we want, we would want at least three weeks to respond to it, which I think is more than fair and reasonable.
May I just comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm going to say just to you, seven days, you may look at as that you've had to do it within seven days before that. But then it goes to the staff. The staff has to put it together and send it to us and give us amount of time. So, just like you need time to digest, understand, and gather your questions, I think it would be fair to this board that they also need adequate time to, to go through that. I don't think any of us here are lawyers. I don't know for a fact. Okay, we have, we have a couple. Okay. But I know for a fact, sometimes it takes me a little while to have to, and then I will be calling Mr. Durfee and Mr. Director Sullivan and so on, saying, explain this to me a little bit better. But, so, I think that you're, I understand your request. But I think that it puts a burden, you know, it's a dominoes effect kind of thing. So, thank you though.
Sure. And I appreciate that. And of course, I want to make sure that the board has more than sufficient time to review all materials in front of it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Mr. Hirsch?
Why can't we, given the complexity of situation, why can't we just push out these timelines to make sure everyone has a point?
Let me start with, you all set with that butter? Let's get through, we can, we can absolutely talk. I think we probably will talk, you know, on our end on the timelines. I just want to make sure we get through any public response first. So, everyone all set for that? I think we're all set.
Okay. Thank you very much.
At this point, I'd ask, is anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern, have a question of these applications? Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Okay. And then following process, I would go back to the applicant at this point. So, is there anything that you want to provide as rebuttal to any of this, that public testimony? Or you set? All set? Okay. All right. So, I think, any questions? I guess I'll leave the hearing open for the board here to ask questions of staff. So, I think it's reasonable, your question, to ask of staff during the hearing. So, that's okay.
Basically, why can't a timeline be stretched out, given the complexity of the situation at all?
It certainly could be. That is your prerogative to do so. But I think, based on what we've heard from the applicant this evening, it appears that with that, you know, absent of a revised traffic study, it appears that the submissions would not be very substantive in nature. When, in that regard, I think that a 14-day and 17-day timeline would be reasonable. But if you feel otherwise, you are certainly welcome to extend that.
Yeah. We can talk about it in the meeting. But any other...
Yeah. I just, there appears to be a typo on the staff memo. It says in words, six days, but in parentheses, it says seven days. Six days would be the Friday before the Thursday night meeting typically, which may be an appropriate timeline. And I would just further, you know, stipulate that we might want to do this in hours or something because, you know, you know, what's, what's a day? Is it 11:59 of that day? Or is it, you know, 7:00 PM? Because that's when the meeting's going to be. How are we counting the days? Because that will matter as well. I mean, everything's been, matters of minutes on some of these things. So...
Okay. Yeah. Good point. Dan, do you want to respond on the review of the traffic study, this, this decision? I mean, I assume you're involved with that review with staff while we're in the hearing. Maybe that's, makes sense.
Yeah. We, the, as was stated, there was a kind of a summation or a revised study that was submitted September of 2021. We, we, you know, the engineering staff, senior traffic engineer had reviewed that, found no, no desire for additional information. We don't feel that things have substantially changed since that time. So, we don't feel there's a need for an updated study. Certainly, you know, that's the board's prerogative. In terms of timelines, I mean, it's all relative. Somebody submitted a revised study, and they changed three sentences. They submitted a letter and said, we changed these three sentences, then that doesn't warrant more than six or seven days. So, it really still depends on what the contents of the submission are. I guess that's all I'd have to offer on that at this time. I, I'm not anticipating a revised traffic submittal, and I'm not, not, not requesting one. I don't feel a need to request one. But if the board feels differently, then...
Yeah. I guess I'd add, more to your comment, certainly, we always have the prerogative to come into the, these meetings and say, we haven't had enough time. And we're gonna, you know, we want to extend because we need more time. So, so I think the most important thing, you know, that we need to do is, is set a schedule and get it written down solid. That, to me, responds to the remand requirements. If we have to adjust it later, that's one thing. But I think the, the primary issue that I read of the court is that it wasn't actually a set schedule for this back and forth. So, Alderman Cleese?
Thank you so much for stating that because it's actually what I started writing down. I think we need to put some dates to those seven days or six days and 14 days and so on. So, as I look at the calendar, I look at that they would have to submit by 11:03. If, staff can please correct me if I, if I'm wrong. And what would the timeframe be by four o'clock? Is that how you normally do it, close of business?
What's close of business for staff?
Oh, four o'clock would be ideal.
Four PM. So, I, my, I mean, my recommendation would be that by 11:03 at 4:00 PM, they have to, the applicant has to submit their information. And then by 11:10 at 4:00 PM, that would be the seven days prior to the November 17th, that they would have to, to do that. Does that sound appropriate to the dates? And I'm asking staff.
That sounds great to us. Thank you.
I, I think we do need to put dates so that everybody has...
I think that's easier than just setting hours.
Yeah, rather than saying dates. So, we say 11:03 by 4:00 PM, the applicant must fulfill that, that obligation. And by 4:00, 4:00 PM on the 10th, that the, any responders, butters, and so on, public would have to have comment.
But I do think, I do think we should do both, though. We should say generally whether we are adopting the procedures. And then, I think I agree with you, specifically then, what that means in terms of deadlines coming up to the 17th.
Thank you. Yeah. I think as much clarification as possible, especially after reading what the court had to say, that things were, my word, squishy at best sometimes. So, I think putting hard deadlines is important.
Okay. So, we're still in the hearing now. You know, there's been an indication by the applicant, there's, there is some more things forthcoming. So, I think procedurally to get this moved to the 17th, I need to close the hearing. So, I will do that now. And in a meeting here now, discuss, you know, November 17th, is that an acceptable day for the board? You know, is that, is that the date we want to shoot for sort of the next, you know, ability to hear anything submitted by the applicant? In this case, it would be, you know, 14 days before the 3rd by 4:00 PM. And any responses, like we talked about, by the 10th should be the seven days. So, so I'm looking for discussion amongst that now in the meeting.
I, I don't have a problem with any of those dates, the 17th, the 3rd, or the 10th. Because if I remember correctly, Mr. Weaver said that they had no objection to it, and they would have additional submissions. But I thought I heard him say there'd be nothing substantive. So, you know, I mean, as I think to, to some of the comments that have been made, you know, if it's just a sentence here and there, it doesn't mean we would have to push it out. And this has been bantered back and forth. And I don't know whether a decision will be made on the 17th, but I think at least it's a start.
Okay. Mr. Rowley?
Sorry, Mr. Ballinger.
No.
This is just a question for staff, which is, and this is just a very practical question. What else do we have on the agenda for the 17th? Is, I mean, is it going to be, would it be a heavy agenda other than this, if we were to move this to the 17th?
At this time, we don't have that agenda formed. But I will say that the 3rd is much heavier than the 17th appears to be.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to state, I have, I have no issues whatsoever with the basic framework that has been discussed or put forth here, so long as all parties involved are willing to abide by it. I think obviously, I, I'm speaking personally, I might have a slightly lower tolerance this time if they're not being abided to. And I think the board has that discretion. If we get a document drop 12 hours before the meeting of some voluminous piece of information, I would be, I would not be hesitant to state that I would not be comfortable hearing this this evening. So, and again, that's, that's not to admonish anyone. It's just, we're really trying to understand the process here and be fair to everybody involved. So, we can stipulate it here. The real question is going to be for all parties involved, if they can abide by it. And we don't have much control over that. But I think if we have to at least establish the minimum framework here. But I have, I have no issues moving forward as, as previously discussed this evening. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman Cleese?
Again, just to, to add to the comment that was just previously made, I 100% agree. I think if we get to the 17th and things haven't been a by-to-by, and suddenly there's a document drop, depending upon who it is that does the document drop, I think it would be appropriate, and it should be part of the record here, that we will just continue this. And we don't want to continue playing this game. But I think that, that was well stated. And I think it should be part of the record that that comment is made. So, thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
I just, I want clarification maybe from staff. But if somebody submits something after the deadline, is it going to be rejected and returned to them as non-responsive to the deadlines and won't be considered as part of the package? I mean, a deadline's a deadline. So, if you don't get something in, you know, you can come to the meeting, I suppose, and bring it to the meeting. But public has that option. But I just want clarification of somebody doesn't adhere to a deadline, what does that mean?
Thoughts?
Yeah. So, that's, that's how we would operate. You know, we'd be rejected, but we would be in possession of it. And they would be certainly welcome to bring it to the board that evening. And then it would be up to you as whether to accept it or say, we have not had adequate time to digest this, and we are pushing the hearing to, you know, another date.
Yeah. I'm all for respecting the deadlines. It makes it a lot easier for everyone.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you again. And I thank you for bringing that up. It's a good point that it would, it would be rejected, and the public would have the right to do that. I've been to enough different hearings and so on where, and I am not making any accusatory, I don't know any of these people. But sometimes when people want something delayed, they wait to that last minute to bring a piece of information. So, that's why I, I made the comment to say, depending upon who the party is that brings this information, and if it's something they've had for a long time and suddenly decided to drop on it, and we, then we push it off. We're kind of playing this, this game. So, I, I think it would have to be decided at that moment.
Yeah. Agreed.
And not just to say, someone to bring something, and we just automatically push it out. So...
Okay. Other comments? So, we're in the meeting. So, at this point, I can take motions. Someone want to frame one regarding next up? Mr. Rowley?
Yeah. I would be happy to do that. And so, I think what I'll do, just to, to give people to understand where I'm going to go with this, I will frame it in the context of the memo that was provided by Matt Sullivan and Scott McPhee that outlines, you know, the process. And then, Alderman Cleese, to your point, will, you know, indicate as it relates to the date to which we will be, you know, postponing the hearing, that what that means in terms of specific deadlines. So, my motion would be as to the case before us, and I apologize, but I don't have the case number in front of me.
It's, it's really three. So...
It's three, right. So, as to new business subdivision plan A22-0177, and new business site plans A22-0178 and A22-0179, I would make a motion that the board adopt the process for proceeding I would make a motion that the board adopt the process for proceeding outlined in the staff memo from Matt Sullivan and Scott McPhee dated October 13th, 2022. And that we specifically table all three cases to the November 17th, 2022 meeting of the City of National Planning Board. And that with respect to the 14-day and 7-day deadlines respectively, that that would mean that any submission by the applicant would be due on November 3rd by 4:00 PM. And then any response by any butter to the applicant's submission would be due on November 10th by 4:00 PM.
Okay. Question?
Yes, item number five about that the staff recommended a revised traffic study. Do we want to eliminate that?
Yeah, and so I should have been clearer. So this would be just adopting, my motion would be just to adopt the process.
Okay.
It's recommendations, but I agree, given both the feedback we received from staff and the clarification we received from the applicant, the expectation and intent would be, A, that we're not asking for a new traffic study and that we would not expect the applicant's.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have that motion with that clarification from Mr. Riley. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Cleese. Any further discussion by the board? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. When I spoke earlier, I'm not asking for a study. If the applicant desires to do a study, so be it. That's certainly their prerogative. Just I didn't want it communicated that the city staff specifically was asking for a submittal. So with that clarification, we're not, I'm not, certainly not, you know, objecting should the applicant want to submit an update. That's certainly their prerogative.
Got it. Any other discussion? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, yes, this is a minor point, but I don't want to overlook it. Mr. Hudson made the point earlier that, I'm going to call it paragraph two, part four, line C, or line B, rather. There's a typo. The written word "six" appears, but "seven" in parentheses. I just want to, I don't want that to come up later and say, "Well, it was written as six, but the number seven was utilized." Officially, we are voting on seven days for response by the public.
Seven days, and just to be clear, that the specific date that I described in my motion would be seven days. But thank you, Mr. Ballinger, yes. Just to confirm, that should be, it should be read as seven days as reference in parentheses, not six.
And the 10th, the board feels that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None? That motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Great. So going back to our agenda, we have a couple of things here. The tentative agenda. Anybody had a chance to take a look at that? And want to make a motion on whether there are any items of regional significance in this report? Looks like it's just a corner road.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
You know, actually, Mr. Chair, I apologize. I will not, because there's a project I recused myself from earlier, which is still on this agenda. So I will not make a motion. Thank you.
Somebody else want to make a motion regarding this tentative agenda? Anything of regional? Yeah, I'm looking at it. I don't see anything.
No, I think the, you know, the only thing we discussed was the one at the mall. But we had already concluded that.
We clarified that.
Yeah, because it's a way across.
It's a state line.
It's a state, yeah. It would be impacted by the community and that would be handled technically when it's applied. And also, I don't think that proposal is just a condition.
Okay.
So I would make a motion, Mr. Chair, that having reviewed the technical agenda, that I've included that there are no proposals of regional impact.
Alright, so we have that motion by Mr. Riley. There's no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None? That motion passes.
One abstention, Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me, one abstention. Did you get that? Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Just a point of order.
Sure.
If, maybe a question for staff. If the board has already accepted jurisdiction over a case, do they need to continue showing up on this?
Tend of agenda?
Because I think the landing is on there. Teledyne or ASD was on there.
That's a good point.
Probably could come.
It's not the end of the world. It's just I'll probably, in perpetuity, recuse myself from voting as long as those cases appear, so.
I believe it is just a historical record of the technical review agenda. I think there is a section that says the new projects versus.
Yeah, it's just the top part.
Okay, just, okay, no, thank you.
Those are previously reviewed, yeah.
Okay, understood. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so next up, we have the adoption of the 2023 meeting deadlines and dates. So everybody's got a copy in there. So just to clarify, it looks like January 5th and 19th would be the first two. Anybody have any? We're just in discussion here, so we can, any comments? Mr. Ballinger?
I have a completely mundane question, but I was curious. I saw, I was very thankful that July 6th was not on the agenda. But is there something statutory or within city code that says we're supposed to be the 1st and 3rd Thursday? Or I can't remember if that language is explicitly written in.
Yeah, I think it is generally. And then there's some adjustments for like, you know, if one of them's like a holiday or like typically like school vacation weeks, we try to stay away from those because people have issues with those, both attend again.
Yeah, I think the base is 18 meetings a year. We subsequently added, I think, two additional meeting dates. But yeah, I think that's, I don't know if it's statutory or in the land use, the National Land Use Code that says generally 1st and 3rd Thursday, right?
Maybe the bylaws.
Bylaws, probably.
I wasn't trying to get too hung up on it. Again, I just wanted to make sure we weren't, we weren't breaking the rules by having it be the 2nd Thursday. So, alright, I'm good otherwise.
Yeah, I was just checking the school calendars. So it looks like the winter break is the last two days of February, first couple of days of March. So we're okay there. And then.
It might run into, does it run into April break?
The April break is, yeah, I'm getting there. The last week of April.
So it doesn't run into May?
May 4th? No, it doesn't look like it. No, it does not. It's only the last week. So I think it's clear of the school calendars. Looking at February 16th.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, yep.
Your bylaws do say that your regular meetings will be held at 7:00 PM the 1st and 3rd Thursday of each month, unless such a date be a legal holiday, in which event said meeting shall be held on the next succeeding secular day, unless otherwise voted by the board. Only one regular meeting will be held in April, July, August, and December.
Right.
The board may, at its discretion, cancel a regularly scheduled meeting. So you can, it does sound like you can play with it.
Yeah, we have moved them around, yeah. So it looks like July is, yeah, 13th, August. Looks okay. So September 7th, when's Labor Day? That's.
The 4th, Mr. Chair.
So that's after Labor Day.
Yes, sir.
Because we've had issues with the one that's up against the front of the, that weekend, so. But just, I'm thinking of public attendance, too. It can be difficult. So I don't have any issues with these. Does anybody else have anything that I'm not seeing?
No.
Okay. Mr. Hudson?
Just to jump on, I believe this is statutory, but staff can clarify. But the timeframe from preliminary to agency review is, appears to be 11 days or something like that. It's always struck me as a very short timeline. But I believe that maybe statutory, or is that a matter of policy?
I don't believe that's statutory. I believe that's a same process.
I don't think we've ever met that. I mean, nice, but when you receive a submission, you know, the applicant was complaining about one case with, you know, seven days in an earlier case. And we're talking, you know, 11 days for potentially four or five cases or submissions of magnitude, so.
We could adjust that if, that's internal. We're talking internal agency review, right?
Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, we'd want to get it.
Ideally, you'd have information before the butter notification. Is that reasonable? Or does that, you don't mail any content to a butter, you just notify them of the meeting?
Correct.
So, I mean, it would be reasonable. I think it'd be reasonable to have a similar 14-day timeframe ahead of the meeting as a target for staff and other reviewers, but.
Yeah, that date never really happens, so.
We're currently discussing a possibly an amendment to that process, which we'll update the board on when we get a little bit closer to the adoption of that. We're still speaking internally about it, but that may be changed in the future.
So we certainly, yeah, we can certainly adopt this tonight, Mr. Chair. And then we can always adjust it later. The key piece is to get the actual meeting dates nailed down, so.
Yeah, let's do that. And then if we want to revisit agency review in a subsequent discussion, that kind of affects anybody about the city, so. So I think we'll be fine. Okay. Good point. Any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion on it, then? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept the draft 2023 meeting and deadline dates as written.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to accept the draft 2023 meeting and deadline dates. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Any other discussion items from staff? Any discussion items from the board? Okay. Hearing none, I take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair?
So a motion by Mr. Ballinger to adjourn. I don't think we need a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None? That passes, we'll adjourn 8:22.